All right, let's go ahead and call a meeting in order, please. Please turn off all cell phones, electronic devices at this time. For to vibrate, whichever is your choice. And Mr. Phillips, would you please answer my question, please?
Father God, thank you for this day. Thank you for your blessings. I pray that you will guide us and give us direction to make the best decisions for the city of Ballenger and its citizens. Please continue to give us wisdom. And we pray for that rain that's in the forecast. I pray this in Jesus' name. I pledge allegiance to the Lord.
Thank you, sir. All right, consider approval of the minutes of the October fifth, two thousand fifteen meeting. Right hand side of the review.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the October fifth, two thousand fifteen meeting with corrections as noted.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, business who are not on the regular day will be given the opportunity to address the council on any subject at this time. And I've been informed that our hotel people are here this evening. We don't have the only agenda, but we would like y'all to address the council at this time, if you would please, on which y'all are here for and what you'd like to present. So this is an open time for y'all.
Hey, my name is Len Patel and this is Dan Patel. I'm a part of Etzuketli. And then called me and said, "City, do you need my room?" So we would like to know what kind of help city will give us. Or, and we can pay around about maybe fifteen more rooms if we get the contract length all the way like that. So we can add on.
Okay, what corner are you speaking of? At the executive meeting?
Yeah, Etzuketli.
The little gas station corner there?
Oh, that place, okay, okay. Yeah, the east beach area, okay.
It's hard to believe in what they're hoping because it's costing much. Without land nowadays, it costs around about fifty to sixty thousand dollars a unit.
Ooh, okay.
It's expensive. Right now, we had around about, what, ten thousand properties in the county, ten or eleven?
In the county?
Uh-huh. And we got four more town, three over there and one over there.
Okay.
The count's almost hundred rooms.
Okay.
That way, in my experience, every thousand, hundred people, they're one room. So ten thousand people means you need a hundred rooms. So all can survive. And I do have a motel in Seymour, Bowie, Cameron, Madisonville, Meyer, every small town, that's where my job.
Okay.
We don't mind to add some, but what kind of help city will do?
So is it across the street there?
No, it's a little gas station in the corner where Johnny's auto used to be.
Ah, on your auto.
The bank, the bank across the street, so one little corner, they're always selling rooms.
Is that place for sale?
I don't think so. My understanding is Bob McDaniel owns it.
Is Bob McDaniel on that corner?
I don't know.
Are y'all interested in purchasing the corner, or you're trying to check on what the city would be?
First of all, we would like to know what kind of build we can come to see. And if it's reasonable price, we don't mind to buy that land too.
Okay.
But if they want so much money, you can't have more.
But you're looking to at least add on more rooms to what you currently have?
That way, our costs were down because we got the office, we got the canopy, we got the manager apartment, everything. And we can add on with the same utility, but the swimming pool is weak and add on that area. Yeah, we have all the way, yeah, all the way. And we might have to use alley too. Right now, I think the city is mainly our alley or whatever. Swimming pool, all the way like that.
There's actually utilities in that, if I remember right from last year, when we did something. The gas company just replaced some of the utilities in that alley, didn't they?
Right, they added that, used to be old brick building and they tore it down and they just put a fence around it with a new new oil and other distributions that they were area.
Okay.
Well, I don't think we can make any decisions tonight, just because.
No, no, I don't.
Because I know Candy always asks me that we are showing him in her room, which is true, there are times we do. And there are two other small motels in town that don't think so, a lot of them like to go there, my experience. So they go to Angelo. So actually last weekend, we lost quite a few of them too, because it was a big funeral and they were my regular customers. And there's times we have the issues like that. And we, kind of the whole school reunion one, they were bugging us in January.
You like to have one of those one finger ones?
I like that one. That was good, but I mean, we lost few of them at the end because they were from Mexico because they were held by, we understand that, that's fine. But then on top of that, we lost one of our regulars that comes through. And like on a accommodate either side, they refuse to go, so they go Angelo. So Candy was saying, those kind of things, we can't keep the people in town instead of sending out different places. Even though we have so many ex number rooms among these four hotels, I don't know what kind of conditions that have that refuse to go. I don't know, I don't know those places to look. So we were just talking one day and said, "We can extend it even more rooms. See what we can work on." We have the area there and the area here. The corner place over there looks kind of bad, doesn't give our good picture of motel because of the way their little gas station is there. And I don't think so that someone has bought it as far as I know. I think some lady owns that place.
Well, that's something easy, or we can check into that, no problem. That's first I've heard of the Bob McDaniel.
Don't hold me on that, but that's what I, things I've heard.
Okay, no, I'm listening.
Bob McLand, back, someone locally, right?
McDaniel?
I don't think, I don't think, I think he leases it because during that, we actually see people staying here a while back in the summer and they were parking underneath it because of the tornado on the hill was coming. So I think they put up signs of private property, so the guy is leasing it basically. I was some lady come and cut the grass once in a while. I think they're local from here.
Okay. But we can check into this, okay?
Yeah, I'm sure, like, do you want to question for us?
Sir?
Do you want to know anything from us?
What?
We can ask questions.
Many rooms. We got thirty-two rooms. And if we got all the way that we already got out, we can make it on the, maybe on the twelve to fifteen more rooms. But that, we was close to forty-eight, fifty rooms. And right now, the way we run, average, we run fifteen, sixteen, seventeen room a day. Yeah, the motel industry is not like another business. It's not like a restaurant.
No.
Okay, we got a fifty to Sunday each activity. Last night, it was six rooms. So Sunday, we don't come. That is it.
He just wiped that one out.
And the motel investment, we put all money front. Like investment, you put money, you blow and put more, motel, you have to put in front. And I relate motel so far in small town.
Oh. All right, well, we can't make any decisions right in the night, but thank you for your creation.
Yeah, figure out, just know.
And then we'll discuss it and we'll put it on the next schedule.
Have you been to the other motel room? Anybody see the motel room lately?
I've heard a lot as far as the remodel and everything.
We spent almost close to four hundred thousand dollars.
We had a lot of families staying in the last few weeks, and they had all positive comments. So, yes. Yes, we appreciate you.
Just so, if you want to have any question, call them. Call me, I'll answer.
Okay, hold there.
Yeah.
He's welcome.
And I do get the help from Cameron, Texas, Maryville, Texas, Meyer, Texas. Meyer, they can give us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to improve the motel. And we already asked over here, but we don't get any help, or we have to send a word.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thank you, gentlemen, have a good evening.
Yeah, well, sure. Hey. Does it have the classification above us?
Right, Brian wanted us to, you see the big event that the guys created that y'all haven't seen them?
I don't know if y'all seen them or not. They're sad, it's a tragedy. And it's, it's not a love story.
Did you want to see it? That when you get there, you see them?
I don't, I don't think I want to. Corey, did I just get a plane? Yeah, you should be able to get a plane. You got nothing on you or just one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we go right in the back.
This is Google Earth images. I'm late, that's Ballenger up there, going back in two thousand and five up until today, watch this. This is just a satellite mystery, and that's where it's dropped right there. And that's where it's dropped.
Yeah, get you down out there in the next bit.
Uh-huh. It fills back up in two thousand twelve. Then you start to see thirteen starts to go back down again. Here we are about a year ago. And that would be a little, here we are today. That's your primary water supply. This is the picnic area.
What they call the beach?
Yeah.
What they used to be on the beach, called the beach anymore.
Yeah, I call it a fairway because there's nothing but grass up there.
Well, that's where all the kids would go for lunch before they were senior adding.
There ain't nobody went out there now to clean the water. This is two thousand eleven, this is, this is actually the copper dam we built at.
Right.
You'll see it again here. We actually had to pump water from here to here because the intake's up here. So technically, if we don't build the copper dam, we are out of water. This got the drum.
What?
Yeah, that's this drum.
Oh, wow.
We took Brad Nichols' drum and went up there.
Yeah, that's beautiful.
You can see the island, some raindrops. The water's mostly all the way back here, and it's not. When drafting. That's our schoolway.
Yeah.
This is in the middle of the lake. That, yeah, that's our pump.
Oh, I thought that was a boat.
No. This is, this is the copper dam right here. That's Randy down there.
You're not waiting?
No. I'm scared if your Brad didn't hit me. All this is supposed to do is water.
And is that the, like, the house that's later?
Yeah.
That could run over there.
Yeah, okay.
We have the only lake that you can literally walk across from one side to the other. And not move water.
And not bomb them.
Can you drive across the lake?
I don't know what's going on. You know what? If you don't grab that argument, we're gonna talk on you every day. It's heading back, is that the?
That's the good thing, I think. The ball ran through that over there.
Yeah. That's your water pump.
Which is not enough water for the left, can we even?
Exclusively of this?
Oh, all that even actually come in. In the, in the larger area of the lake, the deep place might be ninety. Across the copper dam with the intake here, is about six feet.
We need, we need to keep it full right here.
At the, where the copper dam is, it's probably eighteen feet or whatever.
Oh, really?
Yeah. The deepest part of that lake, when it's completely full, this was before somebody set it in, probably twenty-five feet. But it's pretty shallow, but.
It's a long shot, man.
Yeah. And all that you see there that's green should be in the water.
As far as I can see.
Yeah.
Is this?
Yeah, it's all surrounded.
This is Elm Creek, this is one of the water supply. This is ninety-five. This is their old lake, and this is their new lake. You can tell, there's just not a whole lot of loss in there. This is Fandor.
This is for Colin's dock, certainly, I have to stay at for sale.
See, even in eleven, it kind of like goes down a little bit, but it recharges fairly quickly. This is sad.
Yeah, this one is sad.
Oh, five, oh, eight, and then watch this. Twelve.
Yeah, we need to get another year, like twelve.
What we say is working twelve?
We called about ten feet of water when we hit that big round in twelve. When you see that picture in September twelve, we were at fifty percent.
Yeah, still, it was.
It looks like it was. We've been here to that water since.
It was over. Gene's turned off the water. I'm gonna move that screen out of the way. Can we shut it down, just pull them out? Just whatever you want to do. I'll take it over there. Anyway, I wanted y'all to see that, we put that together Thursday. I want your thoughts on it besides being a sad story. Because I want to, I want to share that with everybody.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, sure.
Because I'm tired of people saying the problem's not that bad, tired of people saying. All the way, that's a great saying. He said, "Brian, keep telling me you're thirteen percent full." Well, thirteen percent full means every percent of the. So anyway. Anyway, I wanted y'all to see that, you can try to later on in the meeting, brought up for, we were part of our court, but I want Corey to get home. People said eat dinner, I don't know why.
He'd be going more.
He's a problem, yeah.
None of that.
Nah. He wouldn't do anything like that. All right, moving along, discuss and take action to consider the request from Dennis Barnett to demolish house structure located at three oh six Strong Avenue. Mr. Barnett, you have the floor, sir.
I just want the, the little house in the back, it's not a house, it's like a little shed, it's out of the middle. Keep the thing in room. No winds, stay in, I won't use it for bunkhouse. But it's not worth hauling all the way to COVID if I have to buy it. I mean, if you're gonna tear it down anyhow, I don't mind to know where, and paying to have a guy pick it up and haul it over there, but it's in bad shape. Three years ago, wasn't too bad, now it's, I went over and adjusted the other day, kids knocked the windows out, it's. But it's not, it's not, it don't have a bathroom, it don't have anything like that. You just, you look in the window, it's a, it'd be room and a kitchen area, and then another room, it's a little, just a little thing inside. The old man lived in it.
Did we already condemn it, or you?
Yeah, that's condemned, y'all, that's a city, city got it, taxes.
Okay, so we already done that?
Yeah.
Would, would the schedule be demolished? There's a house, there's a house and a bunkhouse?
No.
The house is a shed.
It's a shed, it's not, I said, I want to turn it, I had to add on to it.
So you don't care about the house, you need the shed?
No, just a little deal in the back, I just packed the porch off right and loaded it up on truck.
I mean, if it's bad, we demolish it, right?
Yeah.
If he, how soon can you get it out?
It could be a while, I'll have to go over there, clean up around it and stuff like that, and see if I can jack it up there and put it.
Okay.
I don't know how bad it is, I just, I just, I talked to the, the neighbor a couple of years ago when I first started working here in Central Texas. And he, he told me the guy's name, he wants prison. And the old man was in prison, and the, the son got out, and he dumped Alice or something. So I never could get a hold, so finally, I just came over here to the city, and they, they told me that y'all got it.
So you think six months enough?
Yeah, that way, that's more than enough.
You get six months?
Well, we give you the six months, but if you'll communicate with Brian, or to further his hearts, let's stay in contact.
Yes, I can.
Since it is already on the demolish list.
Yeah, I can over there, it doesn't.
Yeah.
It won't be long, I don't think, I don't think it'll take that long.
Yeah, and.
I just want to jack it up, see how bad it is.
Well, yeah, exactly.
If it's that bad, just for the.
And if it's that bad, you don't want it, just let me know, we'll knock it down. If it gets to a point where we, we knock it down and you haven't got yours yet, we'll just go ahead and knock it down, leave that there. And if you decide you don't want it, I mean, that little thing going down in about ten minutes.
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be good, yeah.
I mean, it's still.
How big did you say it was, the ladder?
Twelve, but when?
I'm concerned.
Yeah. If it's in Love and Texas, it already could fall down, I'd now fall in. Personally, I hope you have to ask for an extension because it brings for the next six months and you can't get in there. Yeah.
We'll take that.
I'll take it. To make a motion, we approve the request from Dennis Barnett, shed located at three oh six Strong Avenue.
Is that to relocate the shed?
To relocate the shed located at three oh six Strong Avenue, uh, within the next six months.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Have a good evening.
Really, nobody wants.
Have a good evening, be careful.
Uh-huh, thank you all.
You betcha.
We want to get somebody to come in and pick the house. I'll pick the house. Come get it.
Hey, man, if that's.
Save some money.
If that's what it takes, I'm all for that.
All right, moving along, removing the table, discuss and take action to pass a resolution to nominate candidates to serve on the board of directors for the Ronald County Executive District. And lastly, we discussed as far as trying to visit with some people on this, I believe the person we have in place right now is still Alvin Dunn.
It is.
And being, after we discussed it, I think we only have a partial vote.
Yes.
That would be a replacement.
Yes, we do.
Because in the school, the schools and, there are.
Sorry, it's.
There are five thousand number votes, uh, for the elected board members. Um, Ronald County gets seventeen hundred and twenty-two. Ballenger ISD gets twelve, one thousand two hundred and sixty-three. Winter's ISD gets one thousand twenty-seven. And then we're the, we're the second, we're the next one at two hundred and sixty-four. So we can put five people up and nominate them, but if the ISDs in the county don't want them, it's not gonna happen. Um, yeah, there's a lot of pushing back.
So they are two hundred and sixty-four votes versus an average of twelve hundred?
Yes.
For the county and for the.
The county gets seventeen hundred votes, Ballenger ISD gets twelve hundred votes, and Winter's ISD gets a thousand votes.
I don't want to identify issues.
I would.
Does he want to spend on the board?
He is, he is on AP, he doesn't.
That has something to do.
I would also like to take this time to next time when people complain about their valuations, that we should probably give this list.
Make a motion to nominate Alvin Dunn for the Board of Directors for Ronald County Executive District.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, again, removing the table, discuss and take action to approve the engagement letter with Richard Prohm to conduct the annual audit on the books for fiscal year ending September thirtieth, two thousand fifteen. Um, I put some feelers out to a couple of different auditors to gauge their interest. Um, while everyone wanted to do it, no one had the time to do it. Um, Donovan specifically would love to do our votes. Um, unfortunately, he just cannot do this anymore. Um, you know, he's gonna retire at some point. And so I would recommend that we just stay with Richard Prohm.
I make a motion that we stay with Richard Prohm to conduct the annual audit on the books for the fiscal year ending September the thirtieth, two thousand fifteen.
Second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. All right, discuss and take action on limited use of golf carts or the like with explicit purpose, purpose of delivery of packages and partial services.
With this guy.
UPS, they want to use golf carts to, to deliver the, they want to use golf carts to deliver Christmas packages. And so, um, Stan has given me a couple of things, are they gonna need to meet these requirements as well?
Um, there, the way law states, if you're not in this county, it's illegal for a golf cart or ATV to have access on a public roadway. So essentially, they have to register it as a vehicle in order to be legal. So unless you're a government body like us, which you can essentially run, you know, stuff, where utility work.
Well, I do know they're already doing residential half the last fifteen, twenty years. They only do it in residential areas mostly.
Yeah, and I was thinking about it, I don't know if y'all will pass a city hall ordinance or something, or limits their use on it?
Because I hope, uh, Bentonwood, you just.
Yeah.
Got a legal lot, but it has to be a street legal ATV, street legal golf cart, they don't call it golf carts.
Right.
But, but it has to be street legal, and you have to have insurance.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I don't know if y'all as a municipality can regulate, but yeah, you can run it on these our, our streets. You gotta make sure there's lights.
Lights and.
Oh, definitely, definitely, yeah.
You know, now, once they get on to Hudson or Broadway, that's a state highway, and that's none of.
They shouldn't be, I mean, in main highways, they're basically essentially using the residential, Southland, um, San Rita, Bentonwood.
Yeah, I would, I would go, if they have city lines to go there, I'll do that, but as of right now, no.
Okay.
They can't. That's my opinion.
So we probably need to do some research on Lost names one day to get that passed?
Yeah, they're, they're, copy their ordinance.
Copy their ordinance.
We can make it a legal.
Because they just did it for Bentonwood, I know, they're just making it legal because the police were pulling them, making them all make.
They're what?
They're pulling them all over.
Other words? I didn't know.
Well, behind you, you gotta, you gotta be specific because you'll have.
Right.
You know, Mr. Smith over here, wanting to buy this golf cart to the golf course, which will be illegal, you know, which is illegal now.
They do it.
They do it anyway.
Uh, so it's like I know that, isn't it?
And I don't know how many people have told us, you can't do that, you know. Now, Mr., like, Mr. Hampton.
Hampton's is legal.
Hampton is legal, he has his registered, he has license, he has certificates, he has a horn.
Yep.
And he has license plate on it, you know, so I would, you know, make sure you tweak it to where, you know, Mr. Smith down the road, he can't just take his son to, we give him a thirty pack.
Let me ask somebody that rides for ATV around the neighborhood carrying their dog, so the dog's riding with them.
It's gonna be legal.
It still has to meet the court practice, any license, license plate, insurance.
He does it quite regularly up around high school, uh, football field and through there.
I thought so.
Hadn't done any good, hadn't.
So, that's saying it'll be a ticket, so it's.
Gray one?
Hmm?
Gray?
I don't know who it is.
No. It's a gray.
Is it a gray car?
No, mm-mm, no, not gray. It's brightly colored.
At least it sticks out. In the daylight. Would you like to take?
Make a motion to the table, limited use of golf carts or the like for, for, for delivery of packages and partial services pending the review of. Make a motion to table, limited use of golf carts or the like for, for delivery of packages and partial service pending the review of, like, uh, ordinance.
Ordinances. Second?
I'm second.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. Right, discussing take action to amend the rates at the Bounder Recycling Center and set fees for brush limbs disposal.
Y'all, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
Go ahead. Um, y'all should have this in y'all's packets. This is actually effective still today. We have not raised the rates since nineteen ninety-five.
Is there a price list to take somewhere down at the recycling center?
Is there a price list?
Yeah, but what we were charging for different things besides this.
This is what we have.
And do we actually charge somebody for that?
Yes, we do. Yes, we do.
But I think there might've been one that had different things on it.
I think what it's, what's trouble is like, shingles are considered roll-off material, but you don't go for that, I'm sure.
Mm-hmm.
There's some difference, differentiation there between what is and what isn't.
Half, but half old and what's not.
Yes, right. Um, you know, if you're in the city of Bounder, they don't charge for anything except for, uh, the roll-off, for the building materials for shingles. And when the roofing season comes, we are.
Mm-hmm.
The first place they go to, because we're far and away cheaper than everybody else. Um, Scotty would like to make our rates somewhat more competitive, um, with everybody else. And, you know, these things haven't gone up from ninety-five, so if you just do a CPI, the five dollars per cubic yard would go up to about eight fifty. And the ten dollars per cubic yard would go up to about seventeen.
What, what are the competing places? How much are they?
San Angelo, um, they charge by the ton, and I don't think we're equipped to do that, so we just kind of measure it up by the cubic yard. They have scales and they go through their land.
Everybody's got a land due. You put them on the scale, they say where you live, what you have.
Just make sure it has the weight in cubic yards.
Well, you know, there, there may be like.
Do you like a spatial expert? It's sort of, that's two point five feet.
Basically what they're doing is they're.
They just have to get.
Yeah, they're basically measuring the trailer, length, width, and then multiplying it. That's what they're coming up with.
The weight's kind of iffy, cause if I had a bunch of bricks, I'd put a bunch of feather pillows on top of them.
You'd still go a pretty long way.
Well, we had scales.
Yeah.
We don't have scales. The other part of this, as you know, is made it be popular, but what do y'all want to do as far as the brush and picking up limbs? Okay.
I mean, it costs money for us to do that.
It does. We research.
We're talking about two different things in here.
Well, you can break this in two separate deals if you want to. Um, you get a two motion, one decision.
Well, I, we're staying on this deal.
Okay.
I mean, how would we, I mean, I, I don't know how to compare seven fifty or thirteen dollars per cubic yard versus what cities low charge. What do they charge per ton? Do we know?
All I know is, uh, I guess the day we ran into Scotty, he had somebody pull in the shingles on sixteen or eighteen foot trailer. And when I had my roof done in December, January, it cost me a hundred and fifty bucks to haul the family's roof down. On the same size truck.
And we charged a hundred?
I mean, we charged forty. Yeah, we charged forty that day.
We charged forty.
By the cubic yard.
That's what I'm saying. I mean, I don't know if the CPI index gets it there.
Right.
I want to make sure that we're competitive, but, but.
I don't think the CPI gets us there, but that was, that's more of a reference, so.
Yeah.
As to what you want to do.
Cause I was thinking, you know, I mean, it'll, it'll still be cheaper because they're the same on fuel.
Right.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
But.
We have, I don't think.
We're equivalent.
Time and fuel will never matter.
And the recycling center's still free though, if you live, you get, if you have a water bill, you dump alcohol trash, couches, you can, you can dump that stuff for free.
Now, this is a terrible question. How many cubic yards in the average trailer?
Didn't know your height.
Well, I know that.
I can just say, the average trailer that comes pulling in, let's just estimate cubic yards.
If we only had an engineer.
And you're trying to do that.
You have to do math.
Well, most, most of the trailers I've seen, some of them are the dump trailers, but like, most of them are flatbed trailers.
Okay, let's say a sixteen foot trailer, that's probably five, six feet wide, usually, just call it eight.
Two feet high.
Yeah, two feet high.
Sixteen times eight times two is two hundred and fifty-six.
That's feet.
That's cubic feet.
Cubic feet, yeah.
Divided by twenty-seven.
There you go. I'm getting there. Nine point nine and a half, nine point forty.
Let's say, let's call it ten. Let's call it, let's call it ten. The average is ten. And so today, the average is ten, we're charging them fifty bucks for material placed in the four yard dumpster. And a hundred bucks.
That's about right.
For material placed in the thirty yard roll-up. Now, I wonder what the average is if you pull into Angelo.
Significantly higher.
Well, it's a hundred and fifty bucks.
Yeah.
So we don't know.
Yours is about what?
Well, but I'm just, but it doesn't matter, because a charge is a charge. If I take a trailer, the age low, I take a trailer, they give you the weight, you give me yards, I'm just trying to get it.
Trying to get somewhere in, in the, are close with the fuel.
But we don't know their rate anyway, so.
I don't know. I just know that there was a flat fee of a hundred and fifty bucks extra for disposal. And I had to do San Angelo, because we need to.
No matter what, it would go up on the rates.
No matter what, people are gonna be upset.
Let's go fifteen instead of fifty.
Fifteen, seven fifty.
Mm-hmm. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Doesn't make any sense.
Seven fifty per cubic yard for material placed in the four yard dumpster.
This one's seven fifty and that one's fifteen.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Twelve years I've been on the council, my daughter calls me every single time. Maybe twelve, maybe fifteen, I don't know. Last services, ten, whatever. Sorry about that. Okay, I make a motion that we raise, uh, the material placed in the four yard dumpsters to seven fifty per cubic yard. And the material placed in the thirty yard roll-up containers is fifteen dollars per cubic yard.
Second?
I'm second.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, thank you. All right.
Now you want the second half of that?
Yes, right. So we're gonna look at that.
Okay. We had the second half of this and do we want to charge for limb service? And I think, I think we do. We can charge all the cart. Your follow-up is twenty-five bucks, you pay us, we go pick it up. We can do an assessment on the bill and, and implement a five dollar a month charge and still keep the same services we have. Limb front that we have is working today. There is no guarantee that it'll work tomorrow morning. Um, we have invested tens of thousands in the last eighteen months just to keep it good. Um, we looked at a truck, Scotty and, uh, Steve found one, he was in accounting Texas. And when he tracked it down, the, the original owner was of the city of Amarillo. Um, I called the guy up, called their fleet services guy, uh, talked to him, gave him the VIN number. And he said, if they give it to you for free, you might get a bargain out of it. But it was.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
He had, he had a long history of repairs and, um, he did not think we should buy it. Uh, he did tell us that they just bought a brand new one, it's smaller than what we have, but Scotty seems to like that, cause it gets up through the alleys a little bit better. It's smaller than what we have though, and it was, I think, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars.
Not bad, but.
Not bad, but he don't have a way to pay for it. Very bad.
So then, so then how do you set that? My.
I mean, this is just something I thought of. I mean, we've done this as far as the service for so long that everybody thinks that's a service. I think we ought to just put a charge in our water bill that's additional for that, that covers that cost and it. It covers the vehicle, covers the maintenance, and it covers, like when we had a storm, I mean, I know we had, this is years ago, we had the storms, but I mean, basically that truck ran every day just trying to clean up all the mess of the storms. I don't think it should be just certain people that have to pay for that.
If.
What's a certain people?
Well, in a, in a way, yeah, but not in the wrong.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand divided by nineteen hundred accounts, divided by twelve, comes out to five dollars and fifty cents per.
Yeah, but you can't do that on, like the elderly, I mean, you're not gonna be able to add another five dollars to that one.
Yes.
Well, we were at the five, but I was actually thinking the two or three.
You might pull it into the rest.
Right.
Our students.
Yeah. But if you did the five dollars, you'd have the truck paid off in a year. If you did two fifty, it'll be paid off in about two years and a half. And I would have interesting feedback, yeah, but. The, the problem is, is not, I mean, we can keep the fee low and, and, and get a truck. The problem is you need to keep it going.
Right.
For repair, maintenance, replacement in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, but, um, yeah, I hear what you're saying, but.
And they're gonna.
Would you need to, would you need to pay that off in two years?
No, I can't pay that off in two years. Pay off in five years. You need to run numbers on, from, from the capital finance and see.
So is that a hundred and twelve for a brand new truck, the smaller version?
Smaller version, brand new, Amarillo just got it, they mounted it in.
That's a whole lot cheaper than others. Who would like that even use?
Maybe Amarillo, the nine extra one we bought. Imagine they have a little bit more bomb power on their day.
I hear they already brought those out, they want to do.
He said they had, I think, three hundred vehicles in their fleet, not ten, twenty-four.
I wouldn't mind doing that if they, if they fuck up. I'm gonna hate this idea, but, um, our water bill is for folks under sixty-five. I don't really need that cut.
Oh, okay, that's interesting. Check.
Yeah, it's just a proposal.
No, no, it's fine.
I don't know how hard that is to do. We need, we need to, and you're like, I'm gonna call them.
How about, how about this?
I've been here ten years, I don't know that looking at it.
If we can't, after age, we can do the homestead exam, or the orders, over the sixty-five exemption.
Mm-hmm.
We can take a list of, didn't we do that or something? We thought about it, but we didn't go out a little one out, we didn't talk about it.
I don't think we do, yeah, we just, that's it. Is that right?
Yeah. The little one rates.
Oh, okay.
Well, my thought is, is they have pretty soon, they're gonna have pretty.
Yeah, my thought is they're all fixed income.
It's very fixed.
Right.
And you do no raise issue?
No, no raise, no raise. No, no, either military or social security will get a cost of living adjustment. It'll be a.
That's my, that's my concern.
You wanna say twenty-five percent? Is that a good number, you think? Sixty-five and all?
Okay.
Water bill?
Mm-hmm. Fifty percent?
Seventy-five.
It can be seventy-five percent. Hundred fifty-five. And that could, who better gets the blood in here?
Who am I gonna be more? I need to make some phone calls.
All right, so we want to pay it out over five years. It's twenty-five thousand annual payment. And that's gonna be carried by, say, a thousand accounts. So it's twenty-five dollars a year divided by twelve, I think it's two dollars. Two dollars and eight cents to be exact.
This is two dollars to pay it off, but if you want two dollars plus, repair and maintenance.
Well, what you do is you just, you, you assume you're gonna have warranty on the vehicle, so if anything is wrong, you're not gonna.
And so when those people hit that magic sixty-five, does it drop off their bill? I'm just asking.
Well, those property taxes, it freezes, property taxes already freezes.
Yeah, but we don't know who turns sixty-five. I mean, they might want to come in and register with us.
Yeah.
There's a way to find that out. They'd be in here, through the tax office, not bothering, but.
I think you put the owners on them, they won't make twenty-sixty-five, they don't want the two dollar real income, they'll take it off. Some may be benevolent, just.
Maybe some leave it in there and then money is, they'll be coming in to get the repairs and.
Can you, I mean, how easy does that have to be if they want to come in and say, I'll bet, I'm willing to sixty-five here in Colorado, just take it off. Just take it, take it off.
But that, that is right, okay. That'd be easier.
So if we did it that way, that'd be an easier way?
So you said that'd be easier than us trying to figure out who we.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, 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 I'm for that.
If you're sixty-five and older and you have four houses.
That's still on your house.
Yeah, do you take it off the board, do you take it off?
Only, only on your homestead.
On the one you live in.
So you type it off the homestead?
Yeah. See, if the guy's smart, he comes in one ounce, comes a second type of mustache, comes with a couple of.
Only just put the cost of the pie, it's too difficult. Kill it, it'll be fine. Keep the truck, get the same maintenance.
Here goes it.
There you go.
Oh, this one's gonna hurt.
Why?
Um.
Cause they don't make a motion.
I make a motion that we've set the, the, um, fees for brush and limbs disposal to two dollars and fifty cents and add it to the water bill. With an opportunity for citizens over sixty-five years of age to come into City Hall and opt out of that two dollar fifty cent fee for their homestead.
When do you want this effective?
And how are you gonna be doing it?
Well, what will happen?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll get that out, yeah, listen. Do you want to affect if, when we did the vacation rates, we gave what, sixty days notice?
Yes. One, one.
January.
Jan- January one?
Yeah, one, one of twenty sixteen.
Oh, yeah, I have to be about to motion, you said over sixty-five, should do one of sixty-five.
Sixty-nine and all, sorry, sixty-nine and all. Yeah, that's good, that's, that's good, sixty-nine and all. You're gonna pay that piece of four months.
They have a second, please?
I said it.
All the favors say aye.
Aye.
That's in on Bill, we'll take it.
Actually. Don't leave, don't leave Darlene with you, Darlene, she'll go for hundreds of miles.
Oh, I can't move that, I'll run that, it's too big.
She would?
I, I'll just put it in New York.
Oh, all right, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Y'all caught up on that one?
Yes.
All right. Thank you all. All right, removing the table, discussing, consider two requests, the request from Stan Becco for advertising support on the Long Star Market event, the, what was that called?
It was.
Starting to get worried.
Yes, I got hit up by Gil and come from the city, didn't donate to that. And I started to say, Richard, you rather have us donating for advertising or water to drink? We can have it, but I would not.
I'm, I'm glad to hear that, please.
I wanna see it on video before I believe that.
I don't believe it.
I was nice, I'm trying to be nice.
You're doing awesome.
Where did we do this last time? We tabled it, uh, we heard Stan's presentation, um, it did not get on the last agenda, so, uh, because the city manager failed to do so. It's now on this agenda. I did not ask Dan to be here with us, we're gonna just be rehashing the same arguments. Um. This is where, and again, I'm just gonna harp on this, this is where a four A or a four B corporation comes in handy, because this is a no-brainer for those guys. They write a twenty-five hundred dollar check and you call it good. It's sales tax money, but it doesn't impact the general fund.
I guarantee you, the city of Maha, give them a hundred and fifty thousand, have some of that, it'd be flooding.
All of those, all of those. Every city, just Madisonville has a Buc-E's sitting it. If you don't know what a Buc-E's is, Google it.
I know it right.
I mean, you know, they're just.
That's up, uh, going into Huntsville, can I ask you?
Are also.
It's on forty-five.
Yeah. There's one outside basketball.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I mean Madisonville is...
Yeah.
As you're going in.
Mahalia is probably six, I'm gonna, I won't say that place. Um, going into the greater Houston area. Um, I, you know, all these places that he mentioned, they have four A, four B, they're set up for those things. We are not set up for that.
I've never been asked the city being set up for that.
Well, City Baller is not set up.
I know, but we've never been set up to.
No. And as much as I wanna help Stan, I just don't know how we get from A to B. Um, there's also the thought that, okay, if you did twenty-five hundred, Elizabeth Cook's gonna want twenty-five hundred, and you've opened Pandora's box.
Mm-hmm.
Um, to do things we're not set up to do. On the flip side of that, I see the impact that he has, and I don't wanna diminish what he does over there, because it's, it was great. I mean, our, when we get our sales tax in November, now, that's gonna be skewed when he comes back in and asks for money next week.
Cause of the, of all class reunion?
Yeah, cause of the all class reunion. Yeah.
Something else happened that weekend. All class reunion is that, and something else, I can, something else was coming in that weekend.
Off his damn, yeah. So, there's no way to quantify the impact that he has. I think there is one, there's just no way to quantify it. Um, but again, I mean, if you're a four A, just rough numbers. You're living at two hundred thousand a year. That the four A can allow back into community, with twenty-five hundred dollar checks, nothing.
Right. We have to get the county to agree.
We got to, we gotta do something with that, because we're, we're...
There's no, there's no path for us, other than to get the county to agree, to relinquish...
Their...
Their property tax.
Yeah. Their absentee. Our hands are, I mean, we can break it out of contingencies, and, and, because it's not a large amount, if you wanted to do it.
But if the word get around that the city gave us this, and then I understand, yes, Danny brought business, and then somebody else is gonna want twenty-five hundred, and then somebody else is gonna want twenty-five hundred to help put on the show, to advertise, whatever, and it's, like you said, you're opening that bucket of worms.
Thanks to Cannon one.
Cannon one? I probably a bucket.
Big.
It's a big bucket.
But again, I'm saying give him the whole twenty-five hundred. I think this is his show, that he needs to do, the big chunk guy that's on the pocket. You know, I should see us helping them. Same way we helped Elizabeth Cook. We give her the airport, we do...
We, we, there's a whole lot of labor intensity that we help her with, that we don't have yet.
Yeah, we do.
So there's...
Yes.
Monetarily, that's a, that's a no-brainer, as well as having...
Just the fact we let her have the airport for free?
You know, doing the airport, all the stuff, all the city employees out there helping and preparing, set up. No, there's, no, I don't think there's an comparison.
But I don't think there's another, uh, function, other than those two, that would even come to us, ask us for it. Cause everything else, it's changed.
But you never know.
No.
What if we dropped it down to a thousand?
Well, let's back up, I was thinking he was asking for five. But then when he said it, we were in the middle.
I think he said twenty-five hundred was what he's expecting.
Do you remember? Was it? Okay, I'm on, I'm sorry.
We, we could do a thousand and take it out of various contingency funds.
I agree, it did, it does bring business to him. I agree on that. And yes, we do do a lot for Elizabeth with the airport and stuff. And to me, that probably, what we do for her is probably more than a thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, that's what I'm trying to say, that's what I'm trying to say.
But giving them the airport and the city employees out there to help.
The airport loads twenty-five hundred bucks. If she, she could not put that on anywhere else in the county, outside maybe Winters or something. She couldn't put that on anywhere else in a public venue like that for less than twenty-five hundred dollars. For, for, basically, they're out there on Thursday or Sunday, but...
And so we get to call it off part two.
Hey, if you wait till Agenda Idol number twelve.
Didn't we not own twenty-five acres down there for one thing, one month?
Yeah, we did. I agree with you.
Didn't we not own?
Yeah, we did.
Yes, we did, I got a map of it in the office.
You take the bulldozer down there, and fix it. Move it out.
We'll take the Jolene down there and get it handled.
The way it's been done, she could probably do it.
Okay, so thousands would not, her?
It would not, no.
A thousand?
Thousand and fifteen. It would add some twenty-five, so...
Thousand.
Thousand?
Mm-hmm.
Are you making that one?
I made that motion that we, uh, yes, thousand to Stan Biggle for advertising support.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Awesome, thank you, thank you. All right, consider approval of building permits, I don't believe we have any. All right, moving along. Here are the city administrators by with their report, please.
Somebody wants to buy that twenty-five acres down there?
Who?
Somebody wants to buy the twenty-five acres?
No, I've been asked on several occasions when we're gonna develop the twenty-five acres.
Okay, he can't always be filling from everyone on the phone, okay?
It's not. In fact, Councilman Ark has never approached me about developing that.
No, he just says every year, leave.
I think it would be nice.
How it would be? We do own twenty-five acres, I do have a Google Earth map, and I'll share it with you. Um, I'll...
Continous?
It's continuous, yes. It's not a square or anything like that, and it's, it's kinda hit and miss, but it's continuous. You can put a bike trail on it. Um, you could conceivably put a softball baseball complex out there, really long, a bike trail if you wanted to. Um, you could put a bridge, we could buy the other part, we could do like restaurants on one side.
You can't, right, one lane? Well, imagine how tall it has to be, imagine how many fifteen flights there is.
You gotta take the elevator to get the jump scrap shack, there's...
Oh, yeah, that's grief, but chicken place, I don't...
It's not our fault.
I realize that, but nobody has got that. We're responsible for property taxes, and the chicken place can't do that.
Is it not because it's in the floodplain?
It's exactly the reason.
That part didn't get, um, whatever?
Well, it's in the floodplain, set in nineteen thirty-two.
Yes.
Who changes that?
FEMA. Got three hundred fifty thousand dollars laying around?
No.
Is that about the bright cross skin?
We get FEMA to change the map?
Yeah.
It's expensive. That's, I heard it was amazing if we wanted to take it, or divide it.
Yeah, it's, it's, I, I, I don't know the dollar amount, I don't know, it's hundreds of thousands of dollars.
I just wonder how many lakes we've added, and that didn't change the floodplain. But it's, it's hard for me to pass up.
We, we, we would like to be flooded. Yes, tell them they have a conservation man about.
Six miles outside of...
Um, so that is, um, we have, uh, removed two trailer houses from Levin Street, right behind Joe Lopez's house. We have dug a pit out here. Successfully dug a pit, and we are burying properties and houses, um, as they come up. Guys did a good job. The wastewater treatment plant, pond number four, otherwise known as Lake Michigan, it's, the pond four is bigger than the other three ponds combined. I don't know if it's ever gonna fill. And I just came from the city, the city manager, a pond that didn't fill up. So, I'm a little sensitive about that project, but, um, that completed, uh, construction last week. Um, the engineer has signed off on it, I think he just submitted, what form do you got to do to the TDA? Yes, thank you. He just turned that in, uh, today. Um, we are getting, and this is the TDA, this is the two hundred and forty thousand dollars that we fronted. Uh, we're gonna get twenty-one thousand dollars, it's on its way, quote unquote. So the first part of the two hundred and forty-two thousand's coming. Um, there is a form you cannot leave until I print this form out and you sign it, because it's another forty thousand that we have to submit. And then we will do the remaining hundred eighty-five thousand, or whatever it is, uh, after this one's approved. I talked to TDA this afternoon, they did confirm, uh, two hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred eighty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents is what is owed to the city.
Two hundred and twenty-three, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Of that, six thousand three hundred and seventy-five dollars is remaining for engineering, and nine thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars is remaining for admin. Um, I instructed the grand administrator, as well as TDA, that we won't pay either until we start getting money.
I think it's the last dollar we get.
That's typically how it's supposed to work, but, um, this got sideways.
Not for the, not for the engineering, necessarily, definitely for...
The grand administration, he's the last, he's the last one. Um, so, uh, the project's concluded, now we're gonna go to this dutyous task of trying to get paid. Um, the process is, and they ran me through it today, we submit the draw. She has thirty days to approve it, or send it back for correction. Then it comes back, and they do it, and the order is received. So, here we are, August, uh, October nineteenth. She got the draw on September the ninth. And we won't get a check till probably, or the twenty-fifth, I'm just guessing. So, we're going to be shorter until we get all this money back to, back to us. Um, yeah, that's what I had, the, the five-year homecoming, everybody comes back to Ballinger thing, I think went off really well. I didn't hear any complaints, I don't got any hearing. Um, we are continuing on Eighth Street with the pipe replacement. We have got a solution for the housing with the assisted living center out here. I think Corey's trying to set this up, text Scott, so we can get Mr. Martin's team to get us a permit. Um, and that'll take us to the assisted living center. I talked to, um, Clinton, um, works for S K C.
Jason?
Yeah. Uh, he is interested in buying city water, he was told that he could never get onto city water. And I told him that, uh, that's not the case, that if we do this project, we'd be more happy to sell them all the water he wants, so...
Who said that?
Justin Clinton, he's all out in the guns, old place on Ohio.
Well, he's the next place after the living center, I mean.
Yes. Yeah. And he owns part of S K G, I didn't know that either. And we spent quite a bit of money with it. So, um, November's scheduled, we are going to be closed for Veterans Day on November the eleventh.
There is a parade that day.
Yes.
Don't forget it, be sure you...
There is, I thought the parade that said...
No, it, she put it to November the eleventh, wasn't it?
No.
Did she move it to Saturday?
Yeah, she came in, she submitted something to the table.
Yeah, she did, she wanted it, because nobody showed up.
Right. And she wanted the kids to be involved, so she wanted to, I'm sorry, the kids to be there.
We were open on Columbus Day, and, uh, nobody really, never surprised we were open.
Well, I was putting the banks and...
The banks, the banks was closed, and so on and so forth. We were closed on Veterans Day for the eleventh. We will also be closed on the twenty, yeah, twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh for Thanksgiving holiday. And that is my report.
Awesome.
Somebody's watching this on YouTube, and they decide to call you back about that fee. Whatever. I'm gonna tell them that one later.
All right. Any requests in future Agenda items from city councils? Anything else we need to get on the agenda, please? We are moving forward on the what do we call it? The code?
Building code.
Yes. I'll give you all a very, it's not really part of it. I've got several different, uh, versions of what cities have done to fix this problem. Um, one is ultimately strict, very, very strict, one is very, very lax, and, um...
Who would they want in the middle?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm trying to find one in the middle. Um, I can tell you that if, if they wanted to bring suit or whatever, they would lose and spend a lot of money doing it.
I've noticed some of those manufactured, what are they called, modular homes?
Modular homes, yes.
Uh, uh, hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar, um, I mean, they are expensive, they say.
Yes.
To get a high end.
Yes.
But they have to wait all those qualifications, that's, that was the whole argument we had.
Well, the argument was a little trade house, and it's not.
Yeah, it was brought in the old way, because what works, you don't change it.
Well, they don't have the Hoover technology.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They don't have what technology?
Hoover.